Chris Reed strongly advised that the letter should not be discussed in an open meeting, but rather in executive session. That's not true. We have video of that meeting that very well shows what happened. The question was raised about the letter being public, regarding the fact that it was openly distributed. The decision was made to allow the letter to be given to Mr. Orange.
Well, if you're probably, we all know he was wrong in giving it out, but what I mean, it did give it out.
It is not true that Chris Reed strongly advised the letter should not be discussed in an open meeting. That did not happen.
You didn't say that?
No, I've got the video. But it's very clear.
If that's the recollection of the four of the six who signed that letter, please make a motion to strike the words beginning with "city" and ending in "session" that are at the top of the second page of their minutes, and those will be stripped from that. And I believe that brings that.
The whole paragraph there. Hey, you know, that little letter you think was not sent?
The decision was made to allow the letter. There was never a decision made.
Take out the whole paragraph.
Where is that, the second page, I hope?
It's on page two.
Page two.
Okay. Okay. Chris Reed, okay, I see the problem. Strongly advised the letter, you know, of course, that's why these minutes have to be viewed. These minutes were voted, we're not voting on yet, right?
Yes, sir. The night of the rally, I was not here. The rest of you are here, and you all let this slide by. Sorry, but that entire paragraph is not true. Now, I don't know how that made it into the current record, but at least it's out.
Okay, I can tell you how it made it because the night of the meeting, Chris asked me directly. He said, "Please make sure that you put in those minutes that I strongly advised."
He should not have done that because he did not strongly advise.
Well, that's why they're in there.
He did not strongly advise. I've got the video right here. Exactly what happened.
We said several times, if there's some letter should not be.
My only question was asked why they're in there. That's why, because he did specifically ask me to put those minutes.
Can I inject something here? I have it, I have it. I had the letter discussed, the letter was passed, the letter, the man Chris, the gentleman Chris around here basically, you know, made his point. There could be no reference to an executive session. As far as I recall, the attorney handed, this was, I would call it an oversight of our part in the past minutes. I agree with you. We need to strike that out. Unfortunately, in the future, I mean, I think your role as a clerk is to record what happened, not what somebody thinks should be recorded, what happened. If the attorney comes and directs you afterwards, you have to remind him, "Sir, my recollection is this is what happened."
This was not happening. Maybe this was part of the schedule.
Oh, okay. This is, I have to, I have to, I'm supposed to say not, you very carefully, so I tell you, but I support the opinion. So what do we recommend, attorney?
Say, I move that we strike from the next, since September 6, 2018, the paragraph at the top of page two, begin with the word "city," and end with the word "attached."
Okay, so we just take that. Okay. I will, I will thank you that's satisfied.
You want to make a motion, but may I manage with that paragraph out?
I'll send it out.
Okay.
A motion made, but maybe as to strike the top paragraph out, may I say, the top paragraph out of the minutes, may I manage?
Beginning with the word "city" and ending with the word "attached."
Again, with the word "city," beginning with the word "attached," and by Coach Minister Allen, strike that paragraph out of the minutes. Don't say it's "city," right? She has changed.
Did you get the text of the time you came?
Did you take a session, the ending of session?
Attached.
Attached.
The whole paragraph. The whole paragraph. It was attached. You see?
I say, yeah, okay.
Okay, you're taking it back?
Yeah, I said go down.
Okay. No, we get it. Motion. All bros say aye?
Aye.
All votes, no computers.
I have one question, just to state my own intuition. These minutes were passed by us. Are you saying, Mr. Attorney, are you saying that we have that ability to go back? If we have some minutes of authority to go back, obviously, you know, it's not good that we pass it out.
I think, it's an only notation, be the notation of your memory and will take orders that you have.
Okay. Well, that's fine. I think it's not a question of whether we manage.
Okay. I don't see any problem with it. Well, this is recent, this is so recent, you all have a lot of recollection of it, so there's no problem. I would completely buy it up for you.
Okay. Moving towards discussion of House 422, love laws and responsibilities of individual entities. I think you'd probably be the one to...
You know, I think two and three here are so inextricably linked discussion planning and zoning with the council, mayor, and city attorney. I think those things are so strongly linked. From what I've gathered from press coverage of the meetings, go before our city attorney, we can read through the entire letter signed by the city council people. You know, I'm in strong agreement, and I think that their concerns and address to create this special meeting are in regards really to two and three here. And when I read this language, Robert Minister referred to it last week, I said, "Let's call Chris Johnson, and let's get somebody down here from local government, cities, bluegrass ass, maybe even bar association, that can have some educational sessions with the governor, city attorney, city council, mayor, and literally refresh ourselves on whose responsibilities are required." So we called Chris Johnson, and he said, "Hakley, do you really think that two or three weeks before your election, we're going to come down and educate a city council, a zoning board, a city attorney, none of whom may be even sitting in those offices January 1st?" He said, "Would it not be better to wait until you actually know who your mayor, who your city council, who your city attorney is going to be in January, then we educate the new city council, the new participants?" And I said, "In fact, basically, they don't want to chew the same bubble gum twice. If between now and the election or the seating of the new officials, we were to seek and receive some advice regarding which lanes via with our zoning, nuisance, city council, mayor, they're going to have to chew that piece of gum again come January 1st because is it literally, mathematically possible that no one sitting here will be in city government January 1st? Who will?
I don't know.
Okay. You figure this out.
There's nine new ones, six seats and one black beer.
So at least one of you guys still be covered our water, head city government, come January 1st. So I'm going to recommend that we kind of move slowly with regard to that. I think it's a damn good suggestion by the four city council people that we address this stuff, and I think what we need to do is we need to address it to people. You know, I can tell you what the attorney-client duty is to a mayor and a city council based upon what I read in 1987 when I was in law school. It's getting a little stale. That's 31 years ago. I'd like to have somebody come down and say, "You know, we've had some educational materials from city attorney, mayor, and city council that kind of update what I do in 1987." Same thing with zoning, we've got random enforcement or nuisance enforcement. We need to have some folks come down who are up to date, including our liability insurance carrier on the issue of fiduciary duties and who owes what, what duty. I think it's a great idea to have that kind of a session, maybe multiple sessions, when we know who the new city council, the new mayor, even potentially a new city attorney helped. Like I said, everybody in the room potentially could be gone with that, et cetera, or one of the six of you.
Well, the federal sounds like Russian roulette.
That's what we appointed. You're in. I do believe I can say, John, I mean, I have something to bring to the table. I mean, without getting on the minutia of fiduciary, whatever, city council and city government is the upper level of city government. Everything else can get up on it. All the boards and commissioners exist under jurisdiction of the city council and city government in general. I think that should be clearly understood. I think jurisdiction on there are such as zoning boards need to be cautious, and the attorney need to be cautious that if they're going to bring out things in public like happened there, they need to really get that property with the city attorney and mayor. You know, I was disappointed in a few things where I think about, oh, they had a tenant in Florida before me. In my opinion, honestly, if I was sitting in chair mayor, I would not have brought it today. I would, I would take the agenda. I just think he didn't have the time to. 24 hours, they require by law, notify 24 of the agenda members, and not the agenda coming two hours before this totally appropriate.
Cut you guys off, Janine, if you get some.
That's right. And then not only that, then it became public, a gentleman came and he was handed it, he wrote, he read it himself, how he preferred to read it, including certain, including certain things. It was just, it was a poor moment to speak up, and honestly, I feel that it really embarrassed me when I got here. I don't want camera to get a bit of a chokehold or walk on it or something. I mean, I want us to look at the status of city government, where we are at five for a city government. I think everybody running right now, including those of us in comments, want that as well. So I just want to say that as a part of my, it's my contribution.
Well, I think it can be said that the council had nothing to do with the letter being turned over in the first place. So that, that is not on our shoulders.
I think just to pay back what I'm saying here is that, John, I appreciate John's leadership. John, you were here previously, seven years ago, I remember, at least to stand up in the audience. I remember John is an excellent attorney. I'm saying, I hope you book me.
No, don't please, people. Great, great.
I hope you stay here, well, I'm saying, I mean, there is, you know, I have my run in the previous attorney, and the reason, as a business owner, one thing I learned is there are very, very few poor business decisions. There are many very good decisions made on poor information. If your city attorney that's not informed your rights, people make wrong decisions. They'll reflect poorly on us, but the reality is, I appreciate John's leadership. I hope he'll step her up to the next council, whether I think or not, you know, but really truly, I think it's important we have an attorney that sees things and is accessible, you know, to us, so I really wish to say that.
Then regarding that letter, I'm not suggesting it's released at the city council meeting was quote-unquote illegal or wrong. But if you've got an experienced city attorney, et cetera, et cetera, you know that if they kind of had to jump through that hoop 15 years ago, you always have, release the information to that young lady, she can walk up to this desk, say, "John, you have a public document in front of you. I'll like." Now, if there's some reason, I don't want to have her to have that public document tonight, I'm going to say to her, "Ma'am, KRS 61, et cetera, it takes 72 hours to produce that. After you submit a written request tomorrow morning in City Hall, and at the end of that 72 hours, we will provide that public document, and we'll give you a bill that's one page for 25 cents for making the copy." So it's not an issue of whether to write or not to release the letter, which I think would have ended up considered public under KRS 61. Question is the timing. I'm not even sure you guys are ready at the time that...
I didn't even get my...
She didn't get her...
It's like the mafia watch.
Lower than you all get.
We had a bomb here.
And I said, "Right here, and strongly, the fact of reading that letter, we said, "I didn't tell them this and that," Sarah has, I know what was said in that. It should never happen, so that responsibility falls on you, and the rest of it I'll give to Chris.
Well, this is attorney, like my issue, you know, I hate to, I don't have choice. I just want to speak to attorney service, like a gentleman, not specifically Chris or whatever. We have, I had issues in the past, like for example, when we want to discuss the net profit tax, for example, you know, we have attorneys saying, "Well, you can't discuss it." And I'm like, you know, hey, honestly, it comes out, it's related to serving a situation. I can discuss what I think. You have to give me a good reason why I can't discuss something. I think attorneys, we see a church community, like they serve us, we don't serve them. I hate to put it that way, but sometimes it kind of feels like we're doing it all the way wrong. I do believe we just need good advice, you know, that's all, that's the best possible.
The best statement your lawyer can ever tell you is, "Jesus, I don't know. Will that be researched, that issue?" And that's going to happen a lot, because they're, hey, it's not what you know, it's what you think of, or what you experienced in the past. And I have been a city attorney, probably, when some of our younger attorneys at Stanford were great school. And some of this, I mean, I'm not no genius, but some of it has managed to stick, along with cattle prices, farming, all of that kind of stuff that I deal with. And some of it, and there'll be times where I do not know, but you know, I'll tell you, I'm 55. When I was 27 years old, in freshman hall, I hated to say, "I don't know." I was afraid it'd make me look stupid. Now, I know I'm stupid. I'm not sure looking at it. And I don't know what to tell you, because you got to be honest about it. Sometimes the thing is, 24 hours to issue your own issue, considering all laws that exist, it's larger than the inside that I create, and pretend I'm like breathing. I don't know at all. But, you know, you can call Chris Johnson the next morning, there's always research areas you can check, and delay your response if you don't know.
Right, right. Yeah, I did. Well, let me, let me say one thing, and I may inject something that's not really true, but I think you guys wrote that letter asking for some help and direction, and that was one of the main reasons we asked for this meeting September, and it was granted. Granted, I know, and I'll be the person who can tell you, I think we need to have a meeting where everybody comes down and we have a work session, and we can really dwell into this and find out in fact who's to apply. But the reason that we wanted to have this meeting tonight was to have some kind of bridge from now to then, so that you guys know what you're doing. Jeff knows what he's supposed to do, the voting enforcement people, or the board knows what they are supposed to do, and then we have an idea of simply of what we're supposed to do.
And to respond to the letter that you sent us, counsel, in the first place.
I do want to mention, I do want to recognize that zoning enforcer, that he has been very diligent in enforcing zoning against candidates. For example, he called me up, told me I put on my signs too early, and he pulled them out, took them to City Hall. We don't get any special privilege as a zoning enforcer, I can tell you. I appreciate his diligence, and he has a lot of work to do, and I do believe he needs our support, not our criticism, because it's a lot of work, honestly. Everybody's calling him, everybody wants it enforced immediately. Not everybody's aware of all the legalities involved in enforcement, and sometimes there are situations where you cannot move because you have legal issues that could put the city in litigation. So I think, I think working together is going to produce a better city. That was a low moment for the city, unfortunately, and it's never happened before, so hopefully it won't happen again, if we can just work together and assume the best of each other, and then, you know, get the information first would be good.
Well, I'd like to say, James here or someplace, on behalf of the council, I can say with great confidence that no one on this council has criticized you in the job you're doing. Where is Jeff?
I'm back there.
You know, if you've got any bad vibes or bad expectations, it didn't come from this council. I can assure you of that.
And I don't think that it was intended for you guys, that doesn't go through, right? Right, no. No. It was addressed to us, and we tried to make that clear that, that it was addressed to us, the mayor and the city attorney, but then I think what we heard was once it was turned over, somebody then became public.
But it's still, you could actually, as I said, to all of our...
I think the city council deserved a period of time to discuss that before it's reached...
And what you're saying, let me ask you, you were saying that the letter was not intended to be discussed that time?
No.
Okay, I was a little...
I don't know that actually.
Yeah, I was glad it happened, because I was concerned about that being my last name.
It was never, and I might be speaking, so you all stop me if I am, but I don't think it was ever the intent, like being public and read out loud or anything that time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think it was addressed to us because of some issues and some concerns that they had, and wanted it to be addressed by us, and we never had a chance to do that.
This is the first chance we've had. First attempt was started to a training session, so that's why we gathered again and had this thing tonight. I don't think we should pay with this, I don't think we should wait until we have a training session. I think we should have some discussion on where the lines have drawn between the boards. That's why we had this letter.
In that case, I'm going to tell you, I do not know. Therefore, we need to get those folks in here who are experts on that. I've seen our KRS 422, it's an ordinance for nuisance. I've seen it for the first time in the last seven days. It's pretty lengthy. It began to hear 2016 or '17. I do not know the delineation line between zoning and nuisance enforcement. I do not know. Therefore, I would like to find those who do know, and who can educate all of us simultaneously with regard to those issues and stay in the correct place. So that's an interesting issue, and again, once again, the most important study here from an expert is, geez, I don't know, we're going to find out.
Well, I'd ask another question. I'm still disappointed with the letter not being handed, so the station, the same thing that they had, because it's intended for the council members, how did it get to the hand, or at least is aware, he didn't have it, I think. I don't know, you asked anybody, you're not saying, no, they didn't? Yeah, that was a discrepancy. I think it's really a discrepancy.
Now, I'm the one person you can trust. I didn't give that to them. The rest of them, they're sort of...
The only person I know is Mr. Orange, whoever's been living in that game. So he's the only one that's known, exactly.
Well, he didn't come in with the letter.
No.
No, he didn't. Listen, in real...
In those games.
Chris Reed, you're not turning it off, Chris Hannity, that's where, I don't know.
No, but my point, the gentleman, J. Andrew, he actually approached the man, he was aware of the letter, he may not have had a...
He was aware of it, but Chris used a Hannity to him.
I did.
And he knows it. Chris Hannity.
But it still reflects, it still reflects a breaking of our process, somebody in the state of the capacity, leaving, not being... John, can you at least say that the council is in charge of ordinance, is planning zoning, is planning zoning?
The city council is in charge of the adoption of law. The executive is in charge of enforcement of law. Now, that's generally the division between executive and legislative function. We all know in the US Congress, though, they seem to be members of the executive in and hammering, from the TV cameras, about the executive, using law. So again, that's an arguable question, how much development has occurred between my law school days in 1988 and today? I can tell you some law that existed in 1987 with regard to the vision of executive and legislative and judicial function, but I'm not an expert on it, and frankly, it's not being talked a lot about in our city attorney department, or in the zoning at Cedar Creek Lake. That's something I do not have expertise in, and I actually, I'd love to have maybe even a member of the bar association involved in this. In 1987, it was told me in law school, if you're a city or a county attorney, your ultimate fiduciary duty is with the mayor, or the judge executive, if you're sitting in county attorney, 31 days out of the month, and to the city council or the fiscal court if it's county, while in session. Well, that's kind of a nice delineation. If you're not in session and you ask me a question that may reflect poorly upon the mayor, and I have to decline the answer. In open city council meetings, it sounds like, well, no, I think I have to answer because I'm your attorney then. That's 1987, 88 law, a bar review law, talking to, and frankly, it's been 12 plus, 18, 30 years. I'd love to have a member of the bar association address a topic like that, which is complex.
Could you plan for January, I don't know, maybe January meeting, or whichever, who was in council at that time, you may want to, turn it in general, really.
Well, what about November, maybe? I mean, I was forming, you know, going next month sometime. I don't know, I mean...
For December.
Or December.
Well, yes, you're right, we were totally councilmen.
You know, I mean, you have, you know, it's more...
I think that should be the mayor's responsibility at first to be here.
Right, right, right. I see the new mayor, yeah, that's right.
Whoever that might be.
Right, right, right. I do want to put one more thing in the mix, as you talk about the designation of duties, I do believe there's been some misunderstanding of how these city employees, they're reporting relationship. I think too often, the zoning officer is being approached by multiple people to do things, and he's currently, he's really under the direction of the mayor, the executive branch, is his employer, and the city council, the city council votes legislative issues, he enforces them.
Now, are you talking about co-enforcement?
Yes, yes.
Co-enforcement is a separate entity. No elected or appointed official has any jurisdiction over Jeff.
Who is, who does he answer to? Somebody, he's answering someone.
He has a board that he answers to.
I think ultimately, that's major factor. That's what Chris is in it, what I've read, maybe wrong, I've read it, but I mean, we can check the book.
What does it say?
I don't know what it says. I mean, I have that with me.
I've got it all right here.
If you don't have it, I'll have it in hand.
It says that, first of all, that we had a city attorney, that I walked into a meeting on behalf of a neighbor, we had a city attorney named Chris Reed, that was the neighbor of the mayor, the meetings, and Jeff agreed with me, Jeff told me he had conducted every meeting they had. It says strictly in the House Bill 422 that no elected or appointed official has any jurisdiction over the board and Jeff.
Well, I find that hard to believe, and I will be happy, I will agree with what the attorney is saying.
We all got a folder about the board, that's why, it smells that in my...
I can't imagine, I can't imagine him being out there, not answering to anybody directly. He has to be after the summer.
He has board, and board, George Hinman is the chairman of that board, he's supposed to conduct meetings.
Right.
He burns us the co-enforcement report every month in our pack. We go over that with him, he'll answer any questions. I want, Jeff, do you feel comfortable between now and when a new council is elected and a new mayor is elected, do you feel comfortable that you have the knowledge, you and I, the two in the room, that went to a three-day seminar in Bowling Green, and it was ruling, do you feel comfortable between that and when a new council and new mayor are seated, do you feel comfortable during your job? Do you feel that you know exactly your limitations? Okay, it's all on...
Well, maybe you can help us, you've been going a lot, he's training, who do you answer to? Who's your immediate...
No, ultimately, it's not up to the boards to go out here and look for instances and enforce it, so the initiated contact has to go when you go, of course, an officer.
Right. You know, when... What is it that determines whether you're performing your job well or not? Who is that?
Well, the way that the House Bill 422 is the way we are, you know, I don't have somebody telling me, "Go serve this person, go serve that person." I'm not in the city looking for that stuff. I take complaints, and I patrol every street in town. I see something, when I have the time to get it, I've got a list, I act on it. Mayor usually does not know what I'm serving, who I'm dealing with, what I'm putting links on the properties of, or anything else. And then there's a red flag race, that there might be possible litigation or some type of problem, you know, public litigation, any type of thing, then I have to notify him or the city attorney. The lady tells me, "Find the device up into, anytime something like it comes up, consult with your county attorney." And they advise, as well as what we talked about, that the mayor is able to, authorities play neutral in that, just because you don't want him telling them what they need to do, what they have.
Well, you know, the fact that somebody has oversight over you does not mean they have to know every minutia of your, of your job. For example, if it's inappropriate for the mayor, to go look and see whose taxi turned, for example. Because they have oversight on people without knowing the minutia of it, you know what I mean? I'm just saying, he looks at it and aggregate in terms of how well that performance doing overall. So I just want, I will, I will stand with the, come with the attorney and say, "I don't know if it belongs to 422. I live far to learn some more after you do that training." But I think, you know...
Do you still have your wife and uncle that sit in at each one of us? Everything that went behind is in there? Or you have to believe that it's in there?
Well, the fact that it was handed out, that some of you might be seeing, was a stamp of all the ESPN houses, or 26th Amendment ordinance.
Well, I'm just saying, the reason why John is saying that it's still to his academic degree, because the statute is there, of how the statute being entered, whether the statute has been challenged and further refined is still out there. We don't know, you know, I think it's much bigger than just purely a law, which is important, let's start with reading the statute.
I think it'd be good training to have, go over, if you don't, if you ever get too much training, I think, maybe the, maybe the door, the other training, you just can't get too much, I think, if you don't agree with that, or start training, you know, always need more training, always.
Because the thing, I do understand what you're getting at, we don't want, we don't have, enforcement should not be politically driven, they have to be driven by what we cannot do. But the mere fact that somebody's under the oversight, that they take a grant, doesn't mean that it is politically driven.
None of us should be able to tell him duties and force something on. We can inform, you have different citation or different, not citations, or different, what we consider nuisances, but we cannot enforce what anybody's saying.
But if somebody, you want to sit, you look at that, sit there till you're sitting, at least maybe, if you spot someone driving drunk, you don't go running out to make the arrest. You call Zach, you go and say, "Lola is driving down Main Street drunk, would you go check it out?"
Right, right, right. And just like, just like the police force under the mayor, just when he gets into a minutia, let's see, he doesn't get bothered all day with enforcement action, he's overseeing him in a more global sense, sometimes he doesn't stand that.
And all we did, I want to tell you, Jeff, you are a defendant. I've never told you to give somebody a credit. I don't give a shit about anything, I do not give a shit.
I don't report to work at eight o'clock in the morning, you know, there's somebody where you're going to sit there. You know, I know my job, I know what the... You know, I know my job, I know what the ordinance is for, and.
He does his job, you know, and, and, uh.
And it's, it's a, mainly job, I may go in today with a gym to do something, and I may have fifteen votes off for dinner, with building permits or something else going on, and that, so it's, it's about the process.
Yeah.
Uh, Jeff, I want to personally thank you for the job we're doing, uh, out of Rock Black, it's moving, have you been out there, have you seen the work? I said, go, Jeff, go. It looks a lot better, thank you.
You, you know, we, the towns went through a long time, people, with not enforcing that ordinance, and I've been out there with them since June of twenty seventeen, and we're still working hard to get that kind of, you know, it, it's a process, it's going to take some time, so, but we're getting there, we're getting on, and it's going to get shut down.
Yeah, we discussed all four topics, and so I'm going to adjourn.
I've got a motion, but got it on, on the floor, that we have adjourned, I'm saying, I was taking a, Dr. Jackson.